I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, well, this is our first meeting of 2022. So first of all, Happy New Year to everybody. Happy New Year to our residents. I hope everybody is doing well, trying to stay healthy and taking care of themselves. So a couple of things for open forum. First off, some ways we're starting off as we ended in 2021 with open forum, which is that we want to acknowledge and thank a retiring firefighter, Jim Lammy. Lieutenant Lammy became a call firefighter in 1989 and an EMT in 1990. He was hired full time in the department in November of 1995 and then worked for more than 26 years full time and 32 years total, all for our fire department. He became a lieutenant in April of 2016. He had an associate's degree in fire science from Middlesex Community College and he was a and is a certified fire officer, one into and fire instructor, one into and fire inspector, one into. Jim was on the Station Three Building Committee and with his help and construction background, he participated in many of the fire department remodeling and construction projects over the years. He also was a past union president for several years. So Jim, after 32 years of service here in Westford, certainly earned your retirement. We want to wish you well in your retirement. We want to thank you for all of your years of service here in Westford and wish you all of the best as you move on to this new phase of your life. So, thank you, Jim. Okay, and then I have an announcement. I want to, I have to find it. Wait a minute. I have an announcement I want to read from the Access to Town Meeting Committee, which is everybody, I hope folks know, is undertaking a study of ways to make our town meeting more accessible to folks. So the Access to Town Meeting Committee has created a very short survey for residents to fill out and to share their experience with Westford's annual and special town meetings. The committee is asking residents to take a moment to fill out this survey. It is online. And Eric, I'm wondering, can you put up the link to the survey so that people can see it? And it will also have it up on the town website so people can take a look at it. The committee would greatly appreciate residents taking the time to fill out the survey so that they can hear from all of you and understand what the concerns are and how we can make town meeting more accessible and easy to easier to attend for folks and encourage more people to attend our town meeting. If if you can't get online or you don't have access to online, or you simply just prefer a physical hard paper copy of the survey, hard copies are available at the J V Fletcher Library, the Cameron Senior Center, and the Town Clerk's Office. And again, you know, encouraging everybody to fill it out so that it can be representative of the community and reach as many residents as possible. So hopefully folks will do that and will fill out the survey and which will provide valuable information to the committee itself. Jody, do you want to add that? Add something to that?
Yes. So because their link wasn't in the packet, Eric doesn't have access, but we put it on action taken tomorrow so people can look at it that way.
Okay, thank you. And that's all I have. Scott, I know you wanted to say something.
Actually, two things. But first, Muriel Drake passed away on New Year's Eve this year. If you bought your house in the 70s, 80s, 90s, you may have bought it from Miriam, from Muriel. I bought mine for her back in 1988. She's a realtor on her own for a number of years and then she actually became part of, I believe, Colwell Banker and sold houses through them for a while. What's impressive about Miriam, also, sorry, Muriel, also is if if you voted in town for the past 30 years, you probably met her at the polls. She was a poll worker for three decades. She also served on the Housing Authority as a commissioner for almost 30 years as well, taking care of our most vulnerable citizens. What's impressive about Muriel is that's that is the spot that you run for is elected position. She last ran for that job and won at the age of 89. She passed away at the age of 93 and she was chairman of that that committee. So there's no telling how far you can go in volunteering in town. You know, Muriel is just incredible role model. We're going to miss her and our condolences to her family and her friends. She's reactive in First Parish Church, Senior Center. So we're missing a real, you know, giant of our community. So our condolences. And secondly, I also wanted to note something that, you know, it was we all know, in the midst of a huge COVID wave, we're seeing lots of, you know, you see the news and how many people are afraid to go to work. I just want to point out that Jody talked to our town staff a week or two ago and said, you know, it's getting bad out there. Do we should we go remote or should we stay, you know, live in town hall in our buildings? And every single one of our reports said, we want to stay in our buildings and serve the public. So just want to make a note too about how dedicated our employees are that as bad as things are out there and the risks that everyone takes to be out in the workforce, our employees are doing that. They're doing that with their own choice. And, you know, thank you to them and to Jody, who sort of shows that leadership herself.
Yep, absolutely. Okay, anybody else from the board have anything for open forum? Okay, seeing none. Scott just took his hand down. Never mind. Okay. All right. And I don't see any other people with their hands up. So moving to our 7:05 PM item, which is a request for a change of a manager on a general law, Chapter 138, Section 12, All Alcohol Restaurant Liquor License for Summer Village Lodge LLC. And Michael Riley is the proposed manager. I guess Patty, is Patty out there or who's Michael's out there? I see. But Patty, is everything in order?
Everything is just fine.
Okay. With that, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All those in favor? Scott?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay, we are at our 7:10 PM item, which is our consent agenda, and we have a request to approve the following. A banner for the Westford Youth Lacrosse Registration. The applicant is Karen Bauer on behalf of the Westford Youth Lacrosse. The dates are Wednesday, January 12th, 2022, to Wednesday, January 19th, 2022. The location is the J V Fletcher Library. And then an event, the Annual Town Meeting, and for the banner for that. And the applicant is Lynn Cohen on behalf of the League of Women Voters of Westford. The dates are Saturday, June 4th, 2022, to Tuesday, June 14th, 2022. And the location is the First Parish Church. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All those in favor? Scott?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. We are now at our 7:15 PM item, which is a joint meeting with the Permanent Town Building Committee, and it's a presentation of the updated design and plans for the new center building project at 51 Main Street. And Tom Mahana, who's Chair of the Permanent Town Building Committee, it's it's all yours.
Good evening, everybody.
Hi.
I see we have Chris on here too.
Tom, can you just introduce Chris just to for people who may not have seen him before or who are tuning in for the first time?
Sure, sure. First of all, excuse me, thank you. I'm just getting a little bit COVID here myself, so bear with me. Tom Mahana, I'm the chairman of the Permanent Town Building Committee. With me tonight along virtual world is, excuse me, is most of the rest of our committee. I believe they're all, most of them are joining us. And we also have with us tonight is Chris Logan. He's the principal architect on the project from Context Architecture. So what we wanted to do tonight was to provide you, provide the board with a with an update on where we are. As you recall, we were in front of this board in September. At the time, the project had essentially been on hold since March of 2020, once the pandemic set in. So we came to this board in September to kind of ask for direction as to whether or not the project would continue to move forward or for any changes you wanted to implement as part of that. So upon this board's direction, we have since proceeded with with the the design of the project, kind of refining the design. We we have some updated plans to share with you tonight and with the public that shows how we made some revisions to the design to incorporate two potential new positions that may be added in town. And also, we've had we've had several meetings, not only with our committee and with Context, but also with the impacted departments that that will potentially be relocated to this to this new building. And so we've made several tweaks and revisions to to the design to incorporate, you know, all of the feedback that we've received from those departments. And so we're pretty, we're pretty happy where we're at right now, with as far as the building design is concerned. And so we wanted to share that with you tonight. We also have, we also have been meeting with the Clean Energy Committee. They've provided some some feedback on what they would like to see in the project. So we'd like to have a discussion on that. And we do have some updated information regarding project costs. So what I'd like to do is turn it over to to Chris. I'm not sure who's going to be actually sharing the presentation, if that's coming from Mike or from Chris, but but we're happy to answer any questions that you have. So so Chris?
Thank you, Tom. Thank you, members of the board and the Permanent Building Committee. Happy to be here tonight and give you an update on where we are with the project. We, as Tom said, just finished our, so almost finished with the revisit phase to incorporate some additional offices in the building. What we're looking at presently on the screen is the site plan. The building footprint is more or less the same as it was when it was put on hold back in 2020, although slightly is oriented a bit differently to Main Street. So the building is where the former fire station is is now located, and it abuts the generator building, which is part of the police department. The courtyard between the town hall and the 51 Main Street building will remain essentially as is, with the exception that we'll be adding some paving between the building and existing courtyard that will connect a path from Main Street to the police station entrance, the covered entrance. And on the other side of the new building will be some landscaped areas and a pathway out to some parking with accessible parking that'll right opposite one of the entrances to the building. We are relocating the granite police sign. That sign presently is right in front of the old meeting room for the police, which is now dispatch. The reason we're doing that is there has been an issue with wayfinding to the police department. And by putting that existing granite sign over by the entrance, you'll see it as soon as you walk the new pathway from Main Street to the building. We're also having to relocate one of the memorials that is in front of the existing fire station. That's the firefighter memorial that needs to come down and be shifted over to the memorial side of the garden, just to give it its own home and to allow for the construction of the building. And the only other site change that is part of this project right now is reconfiguration of the parking behind the building, which is adjacent to the existing police parking near the entrance to the to the police station. There is some indication that we will be looking at or could be looking at some of the rest of the parking lot to provide some security to the police as they presently put impounded vehicles back there. Next slide, please. The floor plan, it's still a two-story building. The first floor still contains a large community room. One of the changes that we have made in this revisit phase is the community room now can be divided into three distinct rooms. Each one will have required two means of vigorous. It is divided using folding partitions that then extend out, close off the room, or retract to go into a pocket, which is into the lobby. So this gives you the ability to create three rooms or to create a large room and a small room, but it gives you complete flexibility. We've also added a front entry off of Main Street that has a covered entrance outside of it. It gives you a nice face to the street. It also allows for the building to be entered right off of Main Street and in the, you know, warm weather months, a nice feature for the building. We have kept the conference room on this floor. It's a little bit smaller than it was before, but it still is a can serve as a breakout room. And there is a way to go from the community room right into that room, or you can enter it off of the lobby. The lobby of the building connects the community room to the rest of it, as well as to the entrances, the entrance off of the courtyard, the entrance off the parking lot. The other change to this floor plan is that we have moved the veterans' suite to the first floor, which I think is a nice feature. It means the first floor now is occupied during the day. So if you were a visitor coming into the building, there'd be people on that level. So they have a waiting room and they have the director's office and storage, and that faces the courtyard. So it's a little bit more in the private section of the building as far as its views to the exterior. On the upper level, we have added two offices. There is a community wellness coordinator, which I believe is a position that has been authorized by the town. And then we have added a new office for a future sustainability coordinator. So those are now make up the whole, you know, the second floor office suites, because we have kept IT on that level, the IT department, the facilities, and the facilities department. The change in both of those departments is now they're more of an open office layout, and that was developed in coordination with both the directors of those departments. They felt that the way they operate, it was more conducive to have an open office layout with one sort of private office for the director, but informal meeting areas within that open office. And we have worked on some of the storage on this level as well. So the East Department has plenty of storage for themselves, and and there is also additional town storage. There's still a break room, bathrooms, and a central copy area. The square footage of the building is more or less the same as it was before. We have been pretty conscious of not increasing that to, you know, make the building look around the site. And if we look at the next slide, you'll see the elevations have really developed a lot further than they were a couple of years ago and further than they were when we first started the revisit phase. Upper left hand elevation is a view from Main Street. It has a bit of a portico feeling to it, with a small gable facing Main Street. Some of the detailing of that portico has is reflective of the portico that's on the front of the town office building, town hall. And it's a essentially a framed but glazed front entry. So it's very transparent. You'll be able to see activities in there during the day. In the evening, it's a very welcoming facade. It has a fairly fairly high ceiling, so the windows on this first floor have transom lights above the main operable sashes. The east and the west elevations are the elevations that either face the new parking area or face the courtyard. So the the east elevation faces the courtyard. You can see the front of the bill, the the left side of the of the east elevation is actually the meeting room on the first floor. And as you go to the right, you'll see the main entrance door surrounded by glass side lights, side lights and a glass transom. And then above that on the second floor is a very large window looking into the the break room of the second floor office suite. We have wrapped the building in what we call an apron roof on the backside of the building to sort of break up the mass of the of that form. And that continues around the rest of the building as a wide piece of trim, sort of, you know, breaking up the the volume of the building visually because of the the large first floor height, we needed to sort of give an anchor to the second floor windows. On the west elevation, again, the right-hand side is the meeting room with its glass transoms and two doors to access the courtyard. And then to the left of that glass and door arrangement is the the door into the entrance to this building with, again, glass side lights and glass transom. This entrance brings you out into a covered walkway. And from that walkway, you can walk all the way over to the police station and into the police entry without having to, you know, undercover, which is sort of nice for the residents of town. They can during inclement weather, they can get into this building without being exposed to the weather. On the backside of the building, which I have to admit we're still working on a bit, is more of a service entrance to the utility room. That's the north elevation. And that also abuts the existing generator building, which is that small sort of not rendered section on the right-hand side. The X, the materials that we're looking at for this building are architectural fiberglass roof shingles, which are a little more decorative than a typical roof shingle. And the exterior siding will be a combination of fiber cement siding, which we buy in the seven inch to weather, which is a much larger scale than what you typically would see in in residential design. And then we would have painted wood trim and detailing around the building. So it would actually look very similar to some of the details that you see in the existing town hall. The whole notion here is to make this building sort of blend in with the town hall campus and not not become something which looks dated or, you know, some certain period. The building will have a granite base all around the base, all around the building, all four sides. And then above that will be the proper glass, a fiber cement siding. Next slide, please. These are two renderings of the building. These are directly from our Revit model, so they're not as detailed as we will be producing for any sort of public meeting. But it shows a view on the right-hand side from the common and on the left-hand side as you're coming up Main Street towards the common, that you can begin to see how the masses have broken down as you go from the Main Street facade back to the generator building. And that's sort of done intentionally because we wanted the front of the building to be more dominant and the back would be to be secondary to it. So that's that's the the status of the design at this point. We're still doing a little bit more revision to it, but we feel as though it's actually come along nicely, considering the program changes and, you know, and meeting with the committees to refine their their departments. Any questions?
I guess, either Chris or Tom, I certainly know, and I think all of the board members know, that the sustainability of the building and energy efficiencies are a key concern of the sustainability people. The Sustainability Committee, also, it is a goal that the Select Board set for our town manager this year in terms of moving towards achieving net zero. So I'm wondering if either one of you could talk to the some of the provisions that you're making towards making this building as energy efficient and as sustainable as possible and what you're considering?
Sure. So if you don't mind, Tom, don't be launching on this first. Just to educate those who aren't familiar with the building or with our office, one of the missions of Context Architecture is that all of our buildings are designed so that they can, at a minimum, meet LEED certified, which means that they would be able to get a LEED certification and a plaque if desired. Although most of our buildings are designed to be LEED silver, which is the next step up in LEED. So from the basis, we take it takes sustainability very seriously, and we take the health and wellness of working in our building seriously. And part of that is being aware of materials, finishes, construction, exterior wall assemblies, roof assemblies, so that the building is as energy efficient as possible. And that follows through all the way to our plumbing systems, plumbing fixtures, and mechanical systems for the building. So you're getting a base level of sustainability without essentially asking for it. And those are minimal, it's a minimal cost to the building, because it's the way you detail things that actually makes it efficient. Since we restarted this building and towards the end of the phase where we end before the pandemic, we were approached by the phase where we end before the pandemic, we were approached by the the Clean Energy Committee in town. And at that point, most of the discussion was about photovoltaic panels and how to incorporate them on the building. We did a little bit of looking at that. At that point, cost was also an issue. So what we decided to do for the initial cost estimates was to include provisions. So that if you ever wanted to add a solar farm on land behind Town Hall or put solar panels in the building, you would be able to do that with, without having to redo any of the construction. The roof would be designed to be able to hold solar panels. You would have a pathway from within the building to the roof to activate the solar panels. And the provisions would allow you to have a bank of for battery storage within the building. So that's, that still exists, although the Clean Energy Committee is looking a little further into enhancements beyond that. We have not we have not been given the directive to hire, especially to consultants to begin that process. We are presently working on three buildings, one of which is finished, two are which are in design, which have enhanced energy systems and it's sustainable systems. And it's a little bit more of a process to do that. It's a time commitment as well as a financial commitment. Because you begin to, you develop the systems, you look at different types of heating, electrical systems, Muslim or electrically based, as a, also fuel type approach to design of your systems. And you have your net zero sustainability consultants preparing energy models for the different systems within the building. And that's all vetted and then costed out and then presented as part of the dialogue of how you develop these systems. So we haven't gone to that level yet. That's a decision that the town would make and ask us to proceed with that. Happy to do it. As I say, we've done it now for three buildings and it's that's, it's a, it's a good process to go through. You do learn a lot. So that's a decision that we can talk about. See a number of hands.
Okay, yes, so do I. So I'm just going to go in order. So Anita, you went up, your hand went up first. So let me start with you.
Okay, I just wanted to say, you know, thank you. This is a great presentation. Your overview was very thorough and these designs are very complete. And I, a question that I have is whether or not the permanent town building committee has talked a little bit about like future growth and staffing, right? So just in the course of a couple of years, we've added an office for, you know, potential sustainability coordinator, the community wellness coordinator, which hasn't been officially approved yet. And I would just imagine there might be more growth, right? I like the flexibility of the open offices for the facilities department, but has, have you all just talked about, you know, if there's more staff added, where that could go potentially or where they could go?
Yeah. So we have added growth into the the IT and the facilities department because they actually have grown over this duration. The two new offices are certainly sized that they could have a couple of workstations in them. We are limited for the occupancy on the second floor of the building because it's a one stair building. And when you have a one stair building, that the code requires you to limit the occupancy for safety reasons. If there is a decision that the second floor is going to house a lot more people, we would have to revisit that and probably add a second stair to the building. Right now, it's, it's meets the requirements and has a little bit of room for growth.
Okay, Tom?
Thanks. So this, this is a one question for you, Chris. You, you mentioned that in other projects, you brought in net zero consultants. I'm just interested in what the potential cost would be. Second question is Eric, later tonight, we're going to talk about the investment grade audit and the contract that the town is on its way to entering with regard to sort of an energy services, long-term consultancy. I think that would include, I think that would include the potential to put solar panels on the building. I guess it's a question of scope of the, of the current contract. Could it include some, some cooperation with this effort? And will it definitely include survey for solar panels on the top of this building?
So those are great questions, Tom, and I think, you know, you're spot on. We would, as a base, make sure that there are provisions to add solar panels to the building. As far as doing a survey as to how much you would need on the building, that, that goes back to during the, the engineering calculations to what the load is generated by the building and how many panels you could fit and what they're generating. That is all part of this energy modeling that I was speaking about. So that's, as, as we'd be using our mechanical engineers to do a life cycle cost analysis for the building based upon the different systems that we're looking at. And then that information is given to the net zero consultant. And they build an energy model for each of those systems. And then they develop how many, you know, the, the survey of what is would be required with the goal that the amount of energy coming out, that you're gaining, but equally amount of energy you use. So you'd have net zero. I have to say it's much easier achieving that in a building like this because it's not a building that uses 24/7 energy. There will be times when the building will be empty in the evening, nighttime, maybe holidays, so that this type of building is more suited to achieving a net zero rating than let's say, you know, a police station or fire station, that's a 24/7 operation. So that's all factored in when we do these. As far as the cost for the consultants is concerned, they're not inexpensive on the few jobs that we're working on with them. I think the net zero one is running seventy to eighty thousand dollars to do the energy modeling. It's about a three month process where there you have, you know, is there a team that you're working with? With them, that's for the first phase and the second phase is settling on the design and producing all of the documentation and and working with our, our mechanical consultants on, on the specifics of the system and working with us on the actual detailing of how it's going to be incorporated. From the sustainability perspective, that consultant will be looking at all of the exterior envelope treatments, looking at the, some of the detailing that we'll be doing around the windows and doors and roof to walls and just making sure that every single product that is being introduced is, you know, meeting the criteria for a green building. And then also making, we'd be making suggestions as to, you know, really programmatic uses of the building that would tie in with, you know, conservation of water, heat, electricity, that sort of thing. That number is less than the, than the net zero number, but it still would be, you know, I'd say maybe forty thousand or something like that. So you're probably looking at a hundred thousand dollars or so plus in, in additional consulting fees.
That's, that's very helpful, Chris. Eric, we're talking about Ameresco later on. I didn't ask that very clearly, but we're talking about this townwide energy savings contract. Can you tell me, Eric, whether the solar panel part of this would fall under scope with that agreement as written? And if there's any cooperation that you can imagine between the Ameresco people and this effort?
Thank you, Tom. So we will be exploring solar across all of our buildings through the process. So that's one of the things through the investment grade audit process that we hope to explore. So we certainly could look at including this building as well as all of the other school buildings, especially that have flat roofs.
Scott?
Yeah. So first, Chris, you know, thanks for design work. It's actually, I think, a much improved building if, you know, learning, not just, not just what's changed in town with the past year or two, but also just learn, we've learned from COVID in terms of the design and ventilation and in general, I know you've worked in there. I mean, maybe, maybe pushing the limits here, but that's, I'll ask anyway. So what he basically bought some new police cruisers. We took a look at electric versus gasoline. Of course, electric vehicles cost more. But over the lifespan, they, they more than pay for that, or they do pay for that. So you end up with a net zero, no pun intended, you know, long-term cost. So you mentioned a hundred thousand dollars, thereabouts for consultants here. I presume that at the end, we add more to the cost of the building itself, right? So
Yes.
So I guess the question I have is, is there a, again, I know we're looking at ballparks here, but on your experience, we're looking at adding 10% to the cost, 20% to the cost, that kind of ballpark. And then secondly, you know, if we've got, you know, that zero energy, you know, do we gain all or most of that back over the course of, say, 25 years?
So that, great questions. And I think that's one of the, one of the criteria one uses when makes, when you make a decision on whether you're going to go down the enhanced road for for green, sustainable buildings. That is part of the the documentation and calculations that the consultants will be doing is, is actually the payback period and making a recommendation as to whether that if this building is well suited for it, whether the amount of script footage on the roof is well suited for it. They'll be looking at adjacent buildings, whether it's, you know, Tom brought this up earlier today, and I think it was a great, great suggestion was can the roof of the generator building, could that be utilized as an area for additional solar panels? Where other jobs that I've worked on where the roof was not conducive to using solar panels, there was land behind the building, which then the city appropriated as a future solar farm. And they're going to use that for one of the buildings that we did and for other buildings in the area. So they can actually have a very large solar farm. So those are all the things you need to consider when you're looking at an enhanced design, because, you know, what you do want to do is you're setting forth a a strong statement to your community that you take this seriously, but you also, as part of that, need to substantiate the costs. And then if the, if it's a benefit to the community as far as energy usage and it eventually covers the cost of what what you paid to, you know, design it, install it, then, you know, that's really important information to be able to talk about at the get go. So it's all a little theoretical at this stage until you really get into the actual calculations. But the goal would be that it would you would, the payback period would not be, you know, a hundred years. It's, you know, something that one could realize in their lifetime.
But, but I think that answered, Scott, to answer your, your, your basic question, and I think we were it, Chris, you could confirm this. And I think based on their recent experience with similar projects, well, okay, that construction costs are probably more on the order of probably 10, you know, 10% additional cost to the building if we were to go, you know, with the, with the, with the full net zero. That doesn't include, you know, consulting fees, things like that, but it's, I think, you know, this, this is kind of the order of magnitude that we were potentially looking at for this building.
Correct. That's right, Tom. Yeah, we're, I sort of pestered our cost estimator a little bit to, to hone in on some of the numbers because this building is slightly different than the other few we're working on. And he said a range of nine to 11 is probably plausible. And then, of course, he said, don't quote me. But, you know, that's, that's sort of where we are. So.
I asked for, I asked for, I was like older too. I just wanted to know ballpark, you know. I think for our decision making, you know, 10% is what is, is a doable number and 50% is not. So that's all.
Right. Yeah. No, I agree. I agree. And, you know, it's smart to go into this, asking the questions early because you need that information to make a, a good decision.
I just had one quick, quick note to what Chris kind of touched on earlier about their context approach on building design and sustainability. And, you know, as you know, Chris and his team designed the fire station and they used a, they used that exact same approach with, with the fire station project and that. So that building is technically, you know, building that would be, you know, lead, you know, would be the LEED certification on it and and used all the similar components that Chris has described and it would, that we would use with our approach on this building also.
Yeah.
Okay, um, we have a couple of.
Another question, do we have, do we have any idea at all of what our energy bills are for the new fire station compared to the old fire station for like, you know, one year? Again, I didn't ask that question before. If you don't understand, that's fine, but I figured it's worth knowing if you know it.
I, I don't know. And I don't know if Eric would, but I mean, now that, you know, they've got what, two plus years of occupancy in there. Besides those exorbitant water bills they were getting, I'm not, I'm not really sure what they're. We, we could get a, we could get a good idea on, on that, you know, somebody else who knows that.
Jody?
Yes, we could provide that to you tomorrow. Not tonight.
Great. Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, we have a couple of questions from our viewers. The first one was from Barbara Materio. Will solar panels be put on the roof? I believe that we have answered that question. Both Chris and Tom have answered that question. It's honestly still to be decided whether the solar panels will actually be put on the roof now or whether we will make provisions for them to be put on the roof later. Certainly something that's still under discussion to be decided. We also have, let me see. Hang on a minute. Following up on the solar farm discussion, Sue Thomas asks, curious about solar farm discussion. Are we talking canopies over the parking lot? Okay. That's what I like. Nice succinct, clear answers. And then Chetanah Hiramath has a statement that he would like to, I believe, read. So if we could, Eric, if you could unmute him. Chetanah, are you there?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
And we can hear you.
All right. Hello, everyone. Good evening. Happy New Year. My name is Chetanah Hiramath, 62 R Patton Road. I'm founder of Sea Lord, which stands for serene environment and life on earth. And this year we are going to celebrate our 10th anniversary. Westford Climate Action Co-Chairs Carol Morse and Beth Perkins have not only inspired me, but they have revived my spirit. So unlike any annual budget, which is just for one year, Westford's Clean Energy and Sustainability Committee, C A S E, has created a comprehensive roadmap which goes way beyond 10 years, up to 30 years in the future. This roadmap is, has been carefully and thoughtfully customized specifically for Westford. In a sense, this is no different from the bill that was passed at the state level last year. And it's no different from the United States Long Term Plan. And it's consistent with the United Nations Sustainable Development Goal Number Seven that relates to ensuring universal access to affordable, reliable and modern energy services. Energy is central to nearly every major challenge and opportunity the world faces today. The 51 Main Street Project provides a perfect opportunity for Westford to align itself with the roadmap and to lead by example. So I strongly urge Westford to do the right thing and join forces in these universal endeavors. Thank you, Serena.
Thank you very much. Okay, Carol Morse has her hand up. So if we could, Eric, if you could promote her. Carol, go ahead.
Actually, it's a malfunction of my hand feature. When it says lower hand on my side, you're seeing me as a raised hand. So no, I did not have a comment or question. But I believe, I, I think my husband does. If he has his hand up.
All right. Well, thank you. So moving, and, and yes, Carol, he does have his hand up and we will get to him. Emily, Emily Teller?
Oh, thank you very much. I wasn't sure you could unmute me because I'm on my phone. But can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Emily Teller, Texas Road. I just wanted to put in a plug for the Select Board to give direction to the Permanent Town Building Committee. I know that they don't feel that they have direction from you to work on this building to be sustainable and have clean energy. And I'm a little concerned about that. I think that the Select Board obviously is doing a good job moving ahead with the resolution that passed at town meeting. that passed at town meeting and the Clean Energy and Sustainability Committee's mission, but it seems like the Permanent Town Building Committee needs formal direction from you in the consideration of their buildings going forward since that town meeting and since the formation of the Clean Energy and Sustainability Committee, to put in place clean energy and sustainability in all buildings that they consider. And I would hope that you would consider being forceful in doing that, starting with this building. Thank you all.
Thank you, Emily. Okay. Mike Berlinski? Go ahead, Mike.
Hi, thank you. Mike Berlinski, Chair of the Clean Energy and Sustainability Committee. Thanks for the discussion, and I just want to build on some of the previous comments and request that the Select Board, Direct Permanent Town Building Committee, to explore all options, including what information is new to me in terms of opportunity to involve other experts like net zero consultants, even at added cost. And so I request the Select Board to, to pursue that. Again, I think it's important to explore these options, to provide more information, given the recent passage of the climate resolution at town meeting and the roadmap that our committee has published, which would, you know, suggest such action. So that's my request. Thank you.
Thank you. And then, now we're, Paul Morse?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, cool. I'm Paul Morse, Wagon Trail Road in town, and I've been following Main Street Project here for several months, and I echo many of the comments that have been heard prior, but I would like to just sort of emphasize the point about electrification of the building. Sustainability is more than just low-flow toilets and insulated windows, but electrifying that building would go a long way towards the goals of the Climate Action Plan. And as the current baseline stands today, that building was portrayed a year and a half ago, that's having a gas hookup or a gas HVAC system, and that's not the recommendation of the Climate Action Plan, and it probably is not even the recommendation of good engineering practice at this point in time. If you look at the counterpart town, a local town, let's say Acton, they just built the fire station in North Acton over by Narra Park, and that's a totally electric building using geothermal. And their analysis that's available to all of us shows that the payback for a fully-electric geothermal HVAC system is about 11 years, and that building is about the same size, and maybe it's like 25% bigger than the building we're talking about here. So it's comparable in terms of a rough order of magnitude, that a, that a electric, a fully-electric heating and cooling system is practical for these kinds of applications, and it simply wasn't in the, it wasn't in the statement of work to the architect up to this point in time. And so I echo what Mike was saying in terms of giving clear direction to the, to the architect through the Permanent Building Committee, that we want to look at these types of options and calculate their cost and complexity moving forward to meet the, the goals of the Climate Action Plan. And I'd welcome to take a look at that North Acton Fire Station documentation, which is available online, and it's readily available to anybody here, so I'll leave you with that.
Thank you very much. So, let me go to, we have a question from Richard Coleman, who asks, have you considered or have you had any experience with the use of heat pumps?
Certainly, I have reviewed heat pumps on a number of buildings.
I guess maybe, Chris, you might want to expand upon that and what your experience has been.
It hasn't been negative. I don't really know how to answer the question, is there a certain concern that this gentleman has about heat pumps?
I don't know. Richard, if you have a certain concern, if you want to type that in, we can get back to you about that, okay? Okay, Chauncey Chu? Go ahead, Chauncey.
Good, good evening, Chauncey Chu, Green Eagle Road. I just, I may be out of the scope of this discussion here, but since we're talking about clean energy sustainability on buildings, I, and I haven't been following on 35 Town Farm Road here, that project. I understand that the, their proposal has, the choice proposal has been accepted, but I haven't been able to find any consideration being passed on from the choice organization. So I'm not sure what stage this, if there is any contract here, but I wonder if there's still time for this project, the 35 Town Farm Road project, to have some clean energy sustainability concerns addressed in the construction of that facility. Thank you.
Okay, so you are right, Chauncey, we're not talking about 35, the construction of 35 Town Farm Road tonight. There is a discussion later on in terms of funding, but not in terms of the building itself, and part of that is because we are at least probably a couple of years away from construction there, so that's the answer to that. I'm going to go back to Richard Coleman. I think you misunderstood, he wrote in his comments, Chris Logan, you said you had a negative experience explained. I thought you said you had, you did not have any negative experience.
Right, I did not, I did not have a negative experience.
Okay, so, so Richard, I hope that clarifies that for you.
There was a double negative, Chris, by the way, that you just used.
In other words, he has had a positive experience.
Yeah, my, my 10th grade grammar teacher would be rolling right now.
And then Christina Green has a question, and I don't know if we can answer it tonight, Christina, but we'll certainly get you the information, because it's certainly a question that needs to be answered, which is, what is the balance of the 51 Main Street Design Allocation Funds if we want to move forward with the net zero and sustainability consultants? Will we need additional funds allocated? And then she writes, I would be in favor of moving forward with these consultants. So I don't know if we have that information tonight.
Oh, yeah, I can answer that.
Oh, well, I guess we do. Go ahead, Tom.
Well, it's funny, because as, you know, as, as this discussion was going on, I was thinking, you know, it just, just for everybody's information, you know, where we stand today, that there's, it just so happened a coincidence that I was corresponding with, with accounting at Paul Fox today on, regarding this specific issue. So there was originally a $60,000 feasibility study appropriation that was done at Annual Town Meeting in 2017. That was for context, complete the feasibility study, we came back a year later in Annual Town Meeting in 2018 for the funding of this initial design phase. We appropriated $320,000 for, for this initial design phase. This is not, not a complete, you know, soup to nuts appropriation that was going to get us to completion of the project, so just keep that in mind, that's been three years. And the context has been very good, when we negotiated their initial contract, we did not have enough money to take, take this thing all the way through construction talks. But we've stretched that appropriation as far as, pretty far over the last three years. There is still a balance, there's a small amount of money that's, that is available, it's not enough, it's not enough to cover the, the, the fees that Chris was, you know, was referencing earlier, to bring on all these sustainability consultants. We, you know, we have other, you know, we have other costs too, that we're going to have to, you know, at some point, we're going to have to bring in owners, project manager on, onto this project too, so, so these are some of the things that I'm, you know, that we're thinking about, that, you know, we're going to, we would include in appropriation if we were to go forward at Annual Town Meeting this spring.
Okay. Thank you. Scott?
Yeah, I just want to say, you know, add to Tom's comments, in terms of, of direction from the, from the board, Select Board, you know, it's very clear, I'm on the Town Building Committee as well, so it's very clear the direction has been to work with our Sustainability and Energy Committee, and to make a efficient building, and we've, you know, been doing that, in fact, we've been improving upon that. You know, that direction did not include net zero, and as Tom mentioned, the budget we were working with did not include net zero. So I think the direction tonight is not about making energy efficient, we know that. The question is, direction on, do we make it net zero, and how do we appropriate the difference in, in funds to make that happen?
I think that states it very nicely, Scott. Tom?
So just for the avoidance of doubt, is the appropriate time for us to add funds to consider these options if the board were to choose to do so? Would that be in the recommendation we make to town meeting? Is that where the money would show up? Or is that something we would try to, I don't think we have funding allocated, so I guess it would have to come up there. Is that the right procedure?
I, I think so. Go ahead, Jody.
So I guess my question, Chris and Tom, is when, what is the timing? Because, you know, we had planned to bring this project to town meeting, so do you need those funds now, before town meeting approves the project? Or will, will it be all right to seek that as part of the entire project appropriation?
Tom, do you want to?
Well, I would, my initial response would just be, I guess it just becomes a question of timing. I mean, we don't, you know, we don't have, we don't have enough, you know, we have less than 50,000, for my records, available on the appropriation. So that's not enough to, you know, there's still additional work that, that, you know, that context needs to do. We're still planning on trying to start the whole Planning Board, Site Plan Improvement process. If we were to, you know, if we don't get it funds ahead of town meeting, that just means that, you know, really that process, there's only so much we can do in that process until those funds are available, and it just kind of, you know, stretches things out, you know, after, you know, after town meeting. What are your thoughts, Chris?
Similar to yours, Tom, I think, Jody, to, the most, the benefit to the town would be to have reliable numbers. And in order to do so, we certainly could reach out to our, to consultants and get proposals for doing this work. They'll probably want to know a little bit more information about the scope, so we'd need to, you know, meet with the Permanent Town Building Committee and the, you know, Clean Energy Sustainability Committee to try to develop a scope that's realistic for the type of project it is. But we would not be able to engage those consultants until money is appropriated, you know, by the town to do that. So I imagine that the process would be, you know, three, four months of work, and that's, would be pretty accelerated, because, you know, there's a whole, it's a linear process, so we'd have our, our regular engineers working on it, we'd be working on it, giving data to the specialty consultants, who then would work on it and produce models, and then would come back and review it with the committee and the town and make recommendations, and there'd be some back and forth. I mean, on these jobs we're working on presently, so far into month six on some of the energy information. So we'd be, we would not be able to really start that until after town meeting, if the money was appropriated at town meeting.
Well, we, it sounds like we wouldn't be able to real, even if we had the money available today, we wouldn't be able to complete it.
No, we wouldn't. No, no.
Yeah, it doesn't sound like you would meet that timeline. Jody?
Okay, so what I was going to say is, you know, that there, if they needed the money now to start working on that prior to town meeting, that they could seek ARPA funds for that, and we can check and see if the consultant would fall under the ARPA, you know, parameters. So anyway, that was just, you know, my thought.
Tom?
Sounds like there's some things to check on. I guess the next thing we would need would be proposals from the consultants you'd recommend, right, Chris?
Yes.
So is there any reason we can't ask for that at whatever accelerated rate? You can do that, and then we'll get the, before this meeting again, when we, when we have the proposals. In the meantime, we can explore funding and timeline.
Certainly, we, we can certainly reach out to consultants and have them put together proposals, a proposal each for this project.
I, I think that makes sense, I mean, to start, at least start the process and get proposals, and then, and then go from there, and at the same time, as you said, work on funding and timeline, and how that all starts to mesh and come together. All right. Chauncey Chu has his hand up, so Chauncey, if you are speaking to this project, then go ahead. Are you, Chauncey, are you there? Oh, he took his hand down, okay. Emily, all right, Emily has her hand up, and I think this is, not I think, this is going to be the last comment we take, and then we're going to move on, because I think that the Select Board has come to a decision as to what the next steps are. So go ahead, Emily.
So I guess I could wait and see what the Select Board decision is about the next steps. However, I just really, again, hope that you will take a vote to really push this forward. I think, you know, if we have to wait a year, we have to wait a year. If the payback, putting this stuff for an electric building into place, will happen over a period of lifetime of the building, which 11 years doesn't sound too long, and obviously, we're not doing geothermal, but I think it's worth doing this right, as we talked about it, you know? It is the centerpiece of Westford, and I think the Select Board needs to give direction in wording to the Permanent Town Building Committee. Thanks, guys.
Thanks, Emily. With all due respect, I think, and having listened to Scott, I think that, at least for now, the Permanent Town Building does have direction. In terms of making direction, whether or not we want to make the building net zero, I think what we need to do now and next, and we're still gathering information, is to, and as we've directed Chris to do, is to start getting proposals, so that we can see what the, what the costs of the consultants look like, and where we go from here as we move forward. So I think what you can take away from this is that we're certainly looking into making the building net zero, and are pursuing paths that will give us the information that we need to come to a, a final decision, an affirmed decision. And obviously, this will be back before us, as we can go forward and consider it. And again, we'll also be looking at potential timing and funding mechanisms moving forward, and how we can fund those. So I think that's where we are tonight. We have two final comments that I will read, and then we are moving on. And Sue Thomas wrote, I think it is worth pursuing the analysis and possibly ARPA funds in order to move quickly, in order to avoid inflationary pressures on construction materials, et cetera, as well as possible failure of the motion at town meeting without lead certification. I think that we are moving forward, as I said, and then Carol Morse just wrote, Emily spoke incorrectly, we do want to look at geothermal. So I think this has been a really good discussion. Thank you very much to the Permanent Town Building Committee, and to all the work that you've done to, so far, you know, it's, it's a better plan, and as Scott, I think, said, it's a better plan and design than it was two years ago, and I think as we continue to move forward, we're going to get to an even better plan and a better design for the town. So with that, I think we will close the discussion for tonight, but obviously, to be continued. So thank you all very much.
Thank you.
For your time and your input.
Thank you. Good night, everyone.
All right. We're at our 7:45 PM item, which is consideration of priority sidewalk, let me try that again, consideration of priority sidewalk projects by the Pedestrian Safety Committee, including the following, West Street at East Prescott Street, Carlisle Road at the Jack Walsh Fields, and Plain Road Phase Two. And Chris Barrett, who's Chair of the Pedestrian Safety Committee, is here with us tonight. So Chris, it's all yours.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for having me. It's my pleasure tonight to present three projects on behalf of the Pedestrian Safety Committee, for your consideration to support. If you wouldn't mind bringing up the first project, I think there was three maps that I provided as part of your Select Board Packet. I don't know, Eric, you could bring that up? I don't know, Eric, you could bring that up for the audience. Any of the three would be fine.
It doesn't look like a map. There it is.
There we go. Perfect. Thank you so much. Okay, so this first one. So in general, when the pedestrian safety committee is considering projects, we look at them, uh, in terms of how they support, uh, access to our schools as a number one priority. And then second to that, uh, is how do they support connectivity and safety to town buildings and town parks and fields? And these three projects you'll find, try to, we'll, we'll try to satisfy some of those considerations. So the first one that's up in front of us tonight is the request to seek funding for the design of the Phase Two of the Plain Road sidewalk extension. And this would extend from the grassy pond area down to East Boston Camps. If you recall, in previous years, we've sought funding for the design of a sidewalk that's for Phase One of the Plain Road expansion, which takes it from nutting down to grassy pond. Uh, this year, we're asking for, uh, construction funding for that section of that sidewalk. And so now we want to continue on, uh, trying to move this sidewalks, uh, to Stony Brook. And if we eventually do get this constructed, this will be one of the largest continuous sections of sidewalk in Westford, allowing people to go all the way from Rita Miller, uh, down the sidewalk that's being created on Oak Hill, and then all the way down Plain Road to East Boston Camp. So it'll be a really great, uh, connectivity corridor for, uh, the residents in that area. The next project, please. The next two projects are slightly smaller in scope. This is for a design of, of, um, enhancing the existing crosswalk at the Texas Road Jack Walsh Field area. This crosswalk is important because it actually bridges the gap between, uh, communities that are in the Griffin Road area, uh, who want to get across to Texas Road and off to the Neshoba Brook Conservation Area. And then for residents in the Texas Road area to get across a very busy corridor to take advantage of the resources at the Jack Walsh Recreation Area, the playground, the basketball courts, the soccer fields, and also to continue down Griffin Road to, uh, the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail. One of the things that needs to happen here is because we have a higher rate of speed of traffic traveling down the hill on Carlisle Road, engineering work will have to be done to, you know, evaluate what the impact would be to safety improvements in this, uh, the crosswalk area. Next project, please. This project, uh, is important because it improves the safety of our students for not just one, but two schools. We have the Blanchard School, which is further down West Street, and then the day school, as you continue down North Main. Off the side of the map to the right, there's a fairly large, um, community, uh, that we do see a fair amount of pedestrian traffic from, from kids getting over to the schools. As you can see, there's a curve on North Main Street there. And so we have, uh, sometimes cars coming off of that curb and entering into that crosswalk area at fairly high rates of speeds with some compromised sightlines. And unfortunately for kids that are coming from the development off to the right, they actually have to come to this particular crosswalk, cross it, and then continue down to the crosswalk that's in front of the church to get onto the other sidewalk, which is what would take you down to day school if you wanted to go down to day school. So there's, uh, a request here for funding to redesign this area and hopefully improve the safety of pedestrians. Each of these projects are relatively minor in cost. Uh, the Plain Road design fund is 70,000. The West Street North Main Crosswalk here is 45, uh, and the, um, one on Carlisle Road is 40,000. So we're hoping tonight that I can answer any questions you may have and that you would consider, uh, a motion in support of these three projects.
Okay. Um, thank you, Chris. Uh, questions or comments? John?
Hey, Chris, on the, uh, subject of the Carlisle Road project, isn't that going to take state approval? Isn't that a state road to 25?
Uh, it's a state numbered, but it's a town maintained road. So I'm not aware of any, at least from what I've understood, there's no restrictions on a state level for us to do work there.
Okay.
Other comments or questions? Okay, I don't see any, and I don't see any, let me just make sure. I don't see any questions or comments from the audience. Oops, I'm sorry, Scott and Anita. Scott?
I just want to say that, you know, the, the Plain Road extension has been something that's been, um, near and dear to my heart, as I think for a lot of, on the pedestrian safety committee's hearts, because it, it does create, uh, not just the longest piece of sidewalk from Rita Miller down to East Boston Camps, but it connects a very walkable community around that massive area to East Boston Camps. And I think that, you know, that linkage is roughly a small piece of, of sidewalk that makes a huge difference to the NAB community. And to agree, we may be able to eventually use, um, you know, Newport materials on that sidewalk. You know, we, I think we owe it to that part of town to have the mitigation because they're the ones bearing the impact of, of, uh, of Newport. So that, that to me is, um, I won't say no brainer because it's just money, but I think it is, uh, important. You know, second, Carlisle Road, you know, we, we have a pedestrian safety committee because we had a, a child killed on, on Carlisle Road. And not at that crosswalk necessarily, but that is a dangerous piece of town road. And I think we, um, would do well to, to address that. And then, um, you know, third, I think we get probably most comments perhaps on, on North Main Street because we do have a very, again, very walkable development, uh, by Greenwich Village Woods with lots of kids wearing those schools and not the safest path to, to get there. So it's our, our mission to make our school kids safer and, um, and healthier with more walking. You know, $40,000 is a pretty small price tag. So I know with a lot of competing priorities, but to me, you know, these three make a lot of sense.
Anita?
Yeah, I just wanted to, you know, if we're going to be moving forward and voting on this, if we could separate it out just because I live on Plain Road. And so I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
Yeah, we will do that. Okay, um, Lori Awark, who is, uh, an attendee, um, Eric, could you promote her? She has, uh, her hand up. Hi, Lori.
Hello, thank you for letting me speak. I apologize if any of you were on the capital planning committee and already heard my little spiel, but, um, I've lived in Westford most of my 44 years, first in NAB and now over in Parker Village. So I'm speaking on behalf of the Texas Road community. Uh, we've come together as neighbors, um, and Emily Teller, who you all know well, um, has sort of helped us get the ball rolling on this project. It's a really wonderful community. We have a lot of, um, people with young children and dogs. And, um, as was mentioned earlier by Chris, a lot of people coming across from the Jack Walsh Field area and Griffin Road to use the Emmett Conservation Land at the end of the street. Um, and we've all experienced, I've talked to a lot of the neighbors who have the same concerns. I have three young children and two dogs and have waited to cross over to the Jack Walsh Fields for soccer games and for the playground. And people just don't stop. I've stood there for several minutes with three little kids on bikes. People fly down the hill and just go right past. Uh, a lot of my neighbors said they've stepped in the crosswalk and have to actually physically wave their hands to get cars to slow down and stop. Um, and as Scott also mentioned, unfortunately, there was a young girl, Katie, that was killed a little bit further down by the Parkerville Schoolhouse back in 2010. And that is actually the reason I don't allow my 11-year-old to cross at that crosswalk alone, even though one of her best friends lives on Griffin Road. I just feel the way it is is too dangerous. So the pedestrian safety committee was excellent, and they were able to get a pedestrian crossing sign in the middle of the crosswalk right away. But unfortunately, it's already been hit a couple of times and has now disappeared twice. So I don't think that's going to be a viable solution, um, ongoing. So we would love your support, um, in moving this project forward. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, Lori. Okay. I don't see any other comments or questions. You know, uh, uh, it, it seems to me, you know, um, all of, each one of these projects certainly, um, meets and fulfills the, uh, the goals that the pedestrian, uh, safety committee has, uh, set forth for itself in terms of, uh, prioritizing, uh, safe passage to our schools, uh, in, in and around our school areas. So, um, Chris is looking, uh, tonight for support for each of these three projects. We, we are gonna, um, uh, how about if we, uh, uh, well, we'll separate them out. We'll separate each of them out. I was going to go, I was going to do two in one, but we'll just do all three separate instead. So, um, so is there a motion to support a crosswalk at West Street, um, at East Prescott Street?
Have a move. Second.
Okay. Uh, all those in favor? Anita?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Aye. And then, uh, a motion to, uh, support a crosswalk at Carlisle, uh, Carlisle Road at the Jack Walsh Field?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
And, uh, all those in favor? Anita?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Aye. And then last, uh, is there, uh, a motion to support, uh, the Phase Two Plain Road sidewalk?
So moved. Second.
Okay, and all those in favor? Um, Tom?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Aye. And Anita, you're going to recuse yourself, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Good enough. Well, thank you very much. Thank you to the pedestrian, uh, uh, safety, uh, uh, committee and all of the work that you're, uh, that you're doing. Uh, it's very much appreciated. Um, and slowly but surely, we're getting sidewalks here in Westford.
Absolutely. Thank you so much for your time this evening, and thank you for the support. Have the great rest of your meeting.
Thank you.
Bye.
All right, we're at our 8:15 PM item, which is a request from the 35 Town Farm Task Force to allocate $237,000 from, uh, ARPA funds and to support an article for town meeting seeking $580,000 for the engineering and construction of the fire training facility. I'm not sure who is, uh, presenting on this. Is it, um, Ellen, are you doing it? Or Jody or Scott? Um, somebody tell me who's doing this, okay?
Ellen's going to lead off and, um, and I'll fill in if, if necessary. Ellen, Ellen's chair of the task force, so she'll take the first pass.
And I see that she has joined us, so Ellen, it's all yours.
Eric, well, well, we're-
Eric, is she unmuted?
I mean, could you pull, I mean, uh, Eric, could you pull up the, um, the, uh-
Ah, there you are, Ellen.
I think, I think, could you pull up the resolution from the, uh, or the request from the task force on the, on our boards? You can see it.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you so much. So at the, on the screen, you basically see the wording that, um, the chairman just read, which is the dual requests voted by the, uh, 35 Town Farm Road Task Force just a week ago. One to ask that 237,000 dollars in ARPA funds be provided for the Town Farm project. And secondly, to place an article on the mark for the upcoming June annual town meeting to appropriate $580,000. Both of these are to, um, move the construction of a new fire training facility, uh, which would be built on water department land on Forge Village Road. And this would allow us to take down or have ready for the, uh, developer to take down the existing unusable structure at 35 Town Farm Road. So that's our request. Um, I'd be glad to clarify this or, um, explain the thinking, uh, behind the Town Farm Task Force request to you. So I will wait for your questions, and then I will, um, answer them with the information that I have.
Okay, um, uh, first of all, uh, Scott, do you want to add anything to that, um, before I ask for questions?
No, I think Ellen covered it. I mean, I just wanted, I would just, one thing I would add is, um, thanks to Jody and the staff because on December 30th, we had a all-hands, uh, staff meeting for engineering, fire, uh, land use, town manager's office. I'm forgetting who else we had there, but, you know, everybody relevant to this decision was there to confirm a timeline, price points. And, um, you know, that made it life easier for the task force to come up with, you know, good numbers and, and this request.
Okay. Well, thank you to staff once again. Um, Anita, I see you have your hand up.
Yeah, you know, I know this is a, um, a priority for the town and for the fire department, and this keeps coming up, um, a need that needs to be addressed. But I guess, could you provide some more information about the sense of urgency and timing to use ARPA funds?
Absolutely, Anita. There were really two reasons that the, uh, task force decided to ask you to allow us to move forward in 2022. The first, you will recall that David Haddison, who is the executive director of Choice, the developer that you have chosen to do the Town Farm Housing, he spoke at town meeting in 2021 requesting community preservation money for, uh, to include the historic element when those become truly affordable senior housing, the two buildings at Town Farm Road. And what David told the town meeting was, the more that he could show that the town of Westford truly supports the Town Farm project, the stronger his application when he goes for state and federal funding. And, uh, so the town meeting did authorize that CPA money, and that was one, uh, one strong support that we showed. A town meeting appropriation this coming June at the annual town meeting on June 11th to allow work to begin to remove the current unusable cement tower that sits in the middle of the, uh, Town Farm parking lot. And to begin the construction of the new facility at, uh, 64 Village Road would be a second town meeting commitment to the entire project. Because until that tower goes, there is no affordable housing. That's just a major part of how we can progress. So that was the first thinking was that, okay, then 2022 is the time to start this because 2022 is when David is completing his permitting process and when he's starting to seek funding at the state and federal level. So that was the first motivation that we just think the timing was just right to do it this year. The second is the very real timeline, how things will unfold to get housing at the Town Farm. And because the permitting process is happening now, um, even though all of the approvals probably will not be in place until 2024, the agreement with Choice and David is that until all those permits are in place and until he has the funding, he is not committed to, um, purchase the built, the property, the, the Town Farm property and pay the town $580,000. If we wait until late 2024, when we have that check in hand, it will not be until the town meeting in 2025 that we actually have the money to proceed with the fire, uh, removal of the tower. And that will just be too late in terms of the timing. Once Choice has their funding, once Choice has all the permits from the town, they will be ready to go. And the housing will not be able to get off the dime if the town has not removed that brick structure so that Choice can just come in and start the housing. So that is why, those are the two reasons why the Town Farm Task Force feels that it's very strongly, uh, important to bring these to the town in 2022 so that we can get that behind us and have everything ready for Choice to just move in, um, when they take possession of the building. That 580,000 that we receive then, obviously, will pay the town back for the money that we're asking town meeting in 2022 to basically upfront and loan us from other sources, I believe, free cash is one of the options that the, uh, uh, town manager and the finance director have identified.
Uh, Scott?
Yeah, one other point that was not part of the task force decision, to be clear, but is, you know, my own personal observation is that, um, we, we all know what inflation does. Um, to retain construction is 3%. These days, running, running more like 6% to 8%. So if you wait three years to build this, the prices before us today aren't going to be the price we pay in- the price we pay in 2025. So, if you think about a total cost of roughly $800,000 at 3% escalation, we'd be paying about $40,000 more for this project in 2025 than today. If that number were to be 5%, it'd be $140,000 more. So, yeah, there's a real, I think, time value of money in place here, that to wait is not a wise use of our capital resources.
I feel like I'm being a little bit dense. So, I feel like I understand, Ellen, the 580, which we would need to basically approve, so that we could get moving on the, on the fire stuff. Is the 237 for the removal? Is that, is that?
No, the total, I'm sorry, let me explain that. The figures that the engineering, that Paul Jeremy put together for us, looking at what the fire department is requesting, which is a modular unit, it's basically two overseas containers piled on top of each other, that had been retrofitted to replicate a house. The cost of that, and the fencing, and the asphalt, the site preparation, the water in at 64 Village Road, all of that would be a total of $817,000. That's the whole shooting match, to have it ready to go for the fire department to use. If you back out the $580,000 from that, and then that leaves the balance that we're asking for ARPA. So, the whole project costs 817, and that's where the math comes, the two figures of the 580 plus the 237 is the total cost of having this facility at Forge Village Road.
Okay. And the 580 is separate, because that's the, we intend to get, expect to get back from the sale. The 237, so it's 237, is it important that that happen now? Can we do anything with that allocation now, or do we need that and the town meeting vote?
We need both, in order to be able to go out to bid and have the funds to actually build this in 2022, so that the tower at Town Farm can be taken down and ready for the Choice, for the Choice construction of the housing.
Okay, thank you.
Does that math make sense?
Yeah, it sure does. I was just wondering if we needed to do it, we're sort of doing the batch of urgent, you know, very COVID-related stuff first. This is happening earlier than other general, very important, but general town, not COVID-specific things. I just want to make sure I understood the timing. And it sounds like it needs to happen concurrent with, or earlier than the town vote meeting, for you to do what's important.
And for the other, the first reason that I mentioned, which is, it is yet another strong support of the town for the entire Town Farm project, that David Haddison can show to the state and the federal government to say, this is how committed the town of Westford is to this. In 2022, they're ready to go ahead and make this decision, so that the housing is absolutely sure thing to happen.
Okay, thank you, Ellen.
Thank you, Tom.
Yes, just for clarification, I'm not sure that this amount does include the demolition of the existing tower. I'm looking at.
Yeah. We need, the town need to incur no, no cost for that. That will be Choice's expense.
Yeah.
Their responsibility for taking that down. Absolutely.
So, I just wanted to be clear, this is, this is all about the new site and the new building. And so, that's great. I wanted to be sure we were understanding that Choice will take down the old one in the barn. And then, secondly, it's my recommendation that for the town meeting, we take this out of capital stabilization, and then we can pay that back when we sell, sell the property, which is what we have done with 63 Main, so we have a history of that. Because, anyway, that's how I would suggest it. So, thank you. And if you, I think, Tom, you also asked, we need to get going on permitting on this, and we need funds to do that. So, versus peaceful, and come back for ARPA, you know, we want to get moving on that, so we can be ready to construct the new building once town meeting hopefully approves it. So, that's, just to clarify. Thank you.
And if I might, Madam Chairman, it's sort of a chicken and an egg. We cannot go for the permitting until we know what it is we're asking for the permit for, and we can't do that till we go out for bids and get the actual specs for these containers. So, we really do need to have the money, so that we can get the people on board, and then take that to the, to the town boards for permitting. And that will take some time. So, it's not too soon to start this process.
Okay. Anita?
You know, I just want to say, I am very much in support of the work that you're doing, and the leadership that you're providing, Ellen, with the Town Farm Road project. But I do have some hesitation, just because we're in such a surge right now with COVID. And it's not really going anywhere soon. We're virtual because of COVID. I would really, I would prefer to, to go through the, those immediate COVID needs first, kind of as, to kind of piggyback off what Tom was saying, because I just want to make sure all of our COVID needs are addressed, especially testing, which nobody really has access to right now. And then come back and revisit this, because I understand the different, you know, signals and stuff that we want to be able to, to provide into the application, to make it stronger, to let people know that we are committed. We are also committed to safety and COVID. So, the use of ARPA funds, for me, for tonight, I'm, I feel very unsure about that.
I appreciate that.
Okay. Other comments or questions from the board?
May I ask one question? My understanding was that in the list of recommendations for property, for potential uses for the ARPA money, I believe that this was on that list as a possibility. And David Haddison had explained to us, and it's why we suggested ARPA funds in the Town Farm, that this was what other, some other communities had used it for fireplace and other things. So, that's how it got on the table, just so that you know that history.
Yeah. I mean, I don't think there's any question that, you know, it's not appropriate to be on the list.
Thank you.
I think the, the, the issue that Anita's raising is, do we do it now, or do we, you know, await a couple of weeks, just to make sure that we have funded all of the immediate needs that are, you know, directly related to COVID and the health and safety of our, of our town and of our residents?
Understood.
Scott?
I just observed, I just observed that, you know, the, you know, the US, our president has already made clear, we're gonna get 500 million with test kits. I think it's the, through the federal government, and also, there's now a mandate that your private insurance pay for 32 tests per month for a family of four. So, well, it's a shortage now, we're gonna be deluged with testing resources, I think, that we're not gonna spend too much money on, between federal dollars and private insurance dollars, that gets taken care of. So, I, I appreciate the just concern. I don't think that we're gonna go through $3 million, whatever, we've got that balance now, on COVID only in the next couple of weeks. But it's just one opinion.
Okay. So, what is the pleasure of the, Tom, I'm sorry, there's your hand up again.
I stuck in there. I, so I had the same, similar concern, maybe, to Anita, like, why now? Why would we stage this before the other category that I think it fits in, which is important needs for the town? I do find Ellen's explanation for why there's urgency to do it now, for the timeline, to be convincing. I understand why that would be stepped up, given it's not directly COVID-related. So, I guess, to answer your question, I would be comfortable either supporting a vote for this tonight, or if the group felt differently, we could support a vote, you know, in our next meeting, but, but soon.
I guess I'm wondering, sort of as a compromise position, you know, Scott, you're right, the federal government just came out with that. Charlie Baker just came out tonight saying there are, you know, I think, 36 million test kits that are on the way to the state, and that are going to be distributed to municipalities. Does it make sense to table this, or continue this to our next meeting, to see exactly what's happening on the state and federal level, to make sure that, you know, insurance is, is indeed covering the cost of the, the test kits? And it may be that, you know, people are a bit more comfortable at that point in time, you know, in, in considering this, and considering whether to vote or approve it. So, I don't know if, if that makes people feel a bit more comfortable. I don't know, Ellen, that two weeks would make a huge difference?
No, it absolutely would not, because obviously, until, if you were, if you were good enough to put it on the warrant, it would really not be until June of 2022 that we have the funds. So, as long as we have that window of opportunity, get the article on the warrant, should the select board choose to go ahead, two weeks certainly is not going to, to.
I didn't think so, but I just wanted to check.
Thank you.
Scott?
I agree that two weeks is not gonna stop the show. I don't think you have until, till June. At 30 minutes, we want to get, I think, permitting underway. So, if we had the 237, sooner rather than later, we would get that start, that, that moving. So, I don't think you want to wait till, you know, too long, but, you know.
No, I was waiting, I was just gonna wait till our next meeting. My, my, my proposal was, let's wait till two weeks from now. I think we'll have a better sense of, you know, what's happening on both the federal and the state level. And we'll also have a better sense where COVID is in two weeks.
God willing.
So, if, if the board is agreeable, why don't we continue this to our, our January 25th? Is that our next meeting?
That's two weeks from tonight, yeah.
I don't have a calendar in front of me, but.
25th.
Thank you. So, why don't we continue this to our, our January 25th meeting?
Thank you for your consideration. I will see you in two weeks.
All right. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Okay. Thanks so much.
All right. We are at our 8:25 PM item, which is a continuation of our ARPA funding request to determine allocations. So, the first thing I think we just wanted to do was to just recap the projects that are approved, the funding spent, and the funding available to date. Just, it's been a little while, just to remind everybody where we are. And I believe Dan is going to provide us that information. So, Dan, it's all yours.
Hello. Okay, I'll be, I'll be brief with this. To date, we've received $3.7 million in ARPA funds. Back on September 24th, we had two requests for appropriation totaling 556,000, leaving us with about 3.15 million. And then, at the December 14th meeting, we had 10 separate projects approved, totaling just over $247,000. And our current balance in the ARPA appropriation is just over $2.9 million. Now, in, you know, as early as June, we could be seeing the other half of the money coming in, which is just over 3.7 million. So, overall, within the next, you know, seven or eight months, we should have 6.6 million available to us in ARPA funding. There's one other comment I want to make. The Treasury did release their final rule last week, which had some positive impacts. Biggest is being the, the calculation for the lost revenue. The prior calculation was very convoluted, and was, you know, it was sort of messy in the direction they gave. However, in the final rule, they have a one-time standard allowance of $10 million, which, of course, we only have 7.4 million. So, it basically means that all of the revenue taken in by ARPA is flexible, and doesn't have to be allocated towards certain buckets. But basically, it's, it frees up the use of all the projects.
Well, that is great news. Okay, so, it looks, thank you for that update. We now need to, let's see, follow-up from our December 14th meeting regarding the Community Wellness Coordinator, the Mobile Mental Health Clinician, and the Substance Abuse Tobacco Control Compliance Agent. And I think Tom is going to lead that discussion. I just, before you start, Tom, I just also want to state that I know that we had also, at our last meeting in December, talked about bringing back the discussion about the internet connections at our, our various senior housing and affordable housing. The reason we're not talking about that tonight is because we still are gathering information. Just so folks know, we haven't forgotten about it. It hasn't fallen off the list, but we are still gathering information. And so, we expect that we will be talking about that at our January 25th meeting. So, I just wanted to let folks know that. And with that, Tom, it's all yours.
Thank you so much. And Eric, could you please promote, I see Allison Christopher, I see Jennifer Claro, and I see Ray Dick, representing the Cameron Senior Center and the Health, Westford Health Department, respectively. If you could just promote them, so they can join in, that would be terrific. And Eric, you can go to the next slide. The first thing I thought we could do is just recap, there were some questions, just to recap for the community in general, what this community wellness position is, and then we'll come back to the end, and talk a little bit about some of the requests. Tonight, we'll talk about the Cameron Senior Center request for a mobile clinician, because the Health, the Westford Health Department are still considering some options. We will invite Ray to share any comment she has, but I don't think they plan to further their request tonight. So, quickly, the, this recommendation for the Community Wellness Coordinator came out of the Town and School Safety Task Force, which has been in panel for a while, looking at a couple of things, including community wellness. We commissioned a survey, we had two professional consultants give us input, one of them specifically on mental health and wellness, community wellness. And a couple of risks were identified that came out of that, that helped them, lead them to make a recommendation, which I'll discuss in a second. But like every other, you know, community around us, Westford is not immune to, to the terrible consequences of domestic abuse, substance abuse, and self-harm. There's been a history here in Westford that we're all painfully aware of, of the impact these things can have, including at the count that we did, when we did this work, 22 residents lost to desperate despair related to suicide overdose and alcoholism since 2016. We wanted to make, be particularly aware also of the way that COVID has worsened many of these effects, and also wanted to have an eye to cultural competence, and make sure that we were thinking carefully about other, how different communities experience issues of wellness, and that we're sensitive and involve as much input as we can in creating the programming. Next slide, please, Eric. Westford has a number of excellent resources already in the mix, and we want to certainly recognize those and celebrate those as well. Allison, who's here, is our licensed social worker at the Cameron Senior Center. Ray, representing the Health Department, there's a number of programming elements that come from there, a number of counselors within schools. And people recall that Westford has supported the increased number of adjustment counselors in the schools over the past several years. And we also are pursuing, we have for a while, and will continue to use, the Interface Crisis Referral Service for those being encountered in crisis. So, the consultants, first, and then later, after careful deliberation, the Town and School Safety Task Force are recommending that we create this position of the Community Wellness Coordinator. We also, over the summer, with the help of Jody, looked at a number of towns, similar towns to us, for their approach, covering many of these needs. Probably difficult to read on your screen, but available at the Town School Safety Task Force page, you can find sort of a digest of different towns, and what resources they have in place. But the summary is that many communities have pursued a similar position to this, and have seen, have seen real benefits in their community for adopting them. Some of the roles that we would ask the Community Wellness Coordinator to focus on would include coordination amongst the existing resources, strong input from all the different town departments who participated in this, that there'd be a great benefit to coordinating across resources, opportunity to make sure that all of the town personnel are fully trained and aware of all of the resources that the town has. Public education would be a big part of this role. There'd be a big, public-facing part of this role, communicating through social media and the town website, and all the other means we have about the resources available to serve our, our citizens. This person could be a contact point for referrals, and also, maybe just important, or more important, a resource to help track. So, to give an example, if someone is encountered in crisis, through any of these resources, through the library, through the schools, something learned about a parent from a student through the schools, this resource could get involved, and not just make sure that they find that the needs identified, but also make sure they get connected with resourcing, and so that we know that when we encounter people in crisis, we're, we're providing a whole solution as the town. Lots of opportunities, I think there'll be more and more, to pursue grants to support these kind of activities. We've heard a lot at the federal and state level about additional grants and support for mental health and wellness services. This would be a resource to help sure, make sure that Westford takes full advantage of those. And again, back to the cultural awareness part, increase awareness, reach out to the different kinds of communities we have here in town, understand how they encounter and experience mental health, mental health and wellness. experience mental health and wellness issues, and make sure that we're providing to their needs in a sensitive way. Some of the resources that you have in your packet include the position description. Thank you to Anita for leading that effort with lots of input from lots of folks. You can take a look at that. That's a much more detailed description of what we're talking about tonight. Thank you to Jody and Pam Hicks for doing a salary survey for how the similar communities look. I think we've got better information now about what we expect in terms of compensation for this kind of position. One question that's come up a few times is where does this position report? Because it could logically report in a number of different places. We did include that in a number of the surveys that we did with similar communities. I spoke with the town leadership in Acton and Shelsford and specifically about this. Nearly all, or I think maybe even all of the communities we surveyed for this, had this position reported in through the town manager. And the reason cited most often was that the town manager was in the greater, greatest position to help foster cooperation and collaboration, which is really, you know, the most critical, one of the most critical parts of this role. One of the town managers I spoke to said not only that it's a better ability to foster cooperation, but to enforce cooperation. I know everyone in Westford cooperates well, but the town manager does have purview over many, many of the departments need to coordinate, and I think we could rely on that. So again, the reason that the Town and School Safety Task Force recommended this reporting relationship was because that's what we had observed in other towns that have been successful. And that may be the end. Maybe there's one more slide, Eric. So now to the question, very good question we had last week about how do these different requests fit together? And so maybe I'll give an example to help illustrate and then ask for Jennifer Claro to make sure I've gotten this correct, if I've got anything wrong. But the community wellness coordinator would be a full-time position, might find through linkages with the school or through first responders or the library or town staff, an opportunity to assist someone who's in crisis. Potentially, that person could do some intake and do some linkages and do some tracking, making sure they get placed with resources. But that person would not provide routine clinical support. So if the person needed weekly meetings with a care provider, oftentimes, people know that it may take 30, 60 days, sometimes longer, to get a full-time placement with a professional for this kind of help. During that interval, the question would arise, you know, who can provide that help? I know Allison, sometimes at the Cameron Senior Center, gets pulled into that and can do that, but that's something that takes away from some of their other responsibilities. The community wellness coordinator could help identify opportunities for care, provide sort of an intake, but would not be in a position typically to be providing weekly clinical care until a full-time opportunity opened up. The Cameron Senior Center proposal would be to contract some number of hours a week, I think it's 10 hours a week, with a service organization that has clinicians on staff so that we could provide a temporary professional counseling service to people who are in this gap between identifying the need and receiving the full-time care. And maybe I'll stop there and ask Jennifer if I've gotten that basically right.
Tom, yeah, you have, you've spoken very adequately about the difference between the mobile clinician and the wellness coordinator, and it's, yes, definitely a collaboration.
And also, I think your concept, which may be important to the select board, is this would be a contract, it would begin with a certain number of hours. If we saw a need that was greater, we could talk about expanding it. If for some reason we found we didn't need the need, it would be an adjustable sort of outside contract service.
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. Great. And I do want to give Ray, hi Ray, I want to give Ray a chance to check in here. I think, Ray, you're sort of considering a number of options for how you cover the needs that you see in the community.
Actually, Tom, before you give Ray a chance, I just, I want to actually ask Allison if she has anything to add in terms of the wellness coordinator position and how it interfaces with not only her role as a social worker, but within the other departments here in town. And then we'll get to you, Ray. So Allison?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. There you are.
Yes. No, so I think Tom did a great job of explaining that. We've talked pretty extensively about the different roles and how positions would interface with each other. So I feel that, you know, where my role has been able to support a decent number of people who are in need of clinical services, but for whatever reason have not been yet able to access therapy services, it is a very time-consuming task, especially if people are in need of weekly kind of therapeutic support, and it's more than a few people. So where the waiting list started getting very long during the COVID crisis, it seems like a good opportunity to have maybe a flexible number of hours that another clinical service could be available in town to support those people on a temporary basis, just while they're working with either me or the wellness coordinator or in collaboration with William James Interface Referral Service to get into the office or on a Zoom meeting with a longstanding therapist. It would allow for them to have a good clinical holding environment in the meantime. So I think all three things could work well together.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And now, Ray, I know you wanted to comment about and add some thoughts, I know, some new ideas about the substance abuse position.
Absolutely. Thank you very much, Madam Chair. We absolutely support Tom and the request for the community health and wellness position 100%, you know, representing the Board of Health. We've talked, as Allison mentioned, exclusively, our department works exclusively with social services. The regional community health and wellness coordinator started two weeks ago in our department. And I've talked to Tom about what that position's currently working on and what they will work on in the future.
Okay. And then in terms of, my understanding, Ray, is in terms of the substance abuse position that you want to hold on that right now because of some changes that may be happening in the Health Department, is that right?
Yeah, so we do have a recent resignation, and so we would like to propose a hold on the tobacco compliance request this evening, just so our board can have a chance to evaluate those options and meet the best needs of the department.
Okay. Thank you. Right. Tom, back to you. Anything else you want to add at this point?
No, I'd be happy to answer any questions about either additional information or questions or how these things fit together.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. So Anita?
Thank you, everyone. It's always nice to see a bunch of people coming together to work on something and to come up with the solutions. And thanks for Jennifer and Allison for staying late, you know, or working late for us, and Ray as well. I have a couple of questions that expand the presentation, and one is for the community wellness coordinator position that's uploaded to the meeting packet, there have been edits from the version that I was working on. So I just wanted to point out, I don't know if that was the latest version, if that's the final version, that there is some case management or like assistance with applications. I thought Allison does, and so I just wanted to make sure that that overlap was discussed because I think that was something we wanted to move away from, right? We weren't expecting that coordinator to do that individual level of case management.
So Anita, if that is not the current version, what should be the most current version is the version that you worked on. So I apologize if those couple of edits are not in the version that's in the packet.
Okay. Then maybe I could try and find that somewhere, and we could circulate that around to the board and for the public so they could see what it was. Because there were a couple of other things that were not in this version that are in our version, and it also includes like bicultural awareness. So we'd say bilingual, but then we don't really, we don't indicate what language is, right? It's not a monolith. What are the most frequently used, you know, languages here in town where we would need translation or interpretation, interpreting services, right? So I think we should be really clear on that in our job description. And then I have a question about the mobile clinician, and I think this is a really cool idea. I mentioned that the other day when we had a meeting, but I was wondering about whether or not there's been any connection to the State's Department of Mental Health or maybe a local agency. Is there something there that we would be able to tap into instead of hiring our own private mobile clinician?
I think probably, Jennifer, do you want to answer that or try?
Yeah. No, that's a good question, Anita. So yes, to your question, I actually had reached out to Mark Chambers, the police chief, because they have a program called COIN, and that's kind of a collaborative effort, a regional collaborative effort between different police departments. And when they go out on different calls, if there is an immediate concern for any emotional behavioral issues, you know, they'll use COIN to make a referral for that particular family member or that household to be able to get counseling services. And we actually looked to see if there's any way we could kind of collaborate with that effort, since that's kind of a regional, and they're already doing counseling services or providing therapy. And they're an agency that we are talking to to provide the counseling services that are currently being used through this regional effort. But we're also looking at just a smaller counseling, therapy, agency, just because one of the issues that we're running into is unfortunately that, you know, there's not a lot of counselors that don't have enough caseload. They're, you know, they're kind of, you know, that's not an issue. So we're kind of limited to what's available right now. So these two, these two different agencies are ones that were very open to what we were trying to do and seemed to be proactive and thought it would be a great kind of fit for their counseling services. So, you know, we did try to actually talk to different local clinicians in Westford, but at this point, we have not been successful to make a match because we would love to work with, you know, a therapist in town to be able to, you know, support their business. But like I said, right now, Family Continuity and the Elliott Clinic are the two that really have shown an interest in this effort.
Any other questions? Okay. So seeing none, I guess I would ask, is there, at this point, is there a motion to support the hiring of a community wellness coordinator? Let's take them separate, okay? Scott, did you have your hand up? I saw it just went up. Go ahead.
I guess, I guess my question is, are we supporting the position or are we supporting how to pay for it? Because, you know, we've had reservations about using one-time money for long-term costs. So I guess, I guess the question is about how are we putting, is this planning to be used, you know, three years of full funding? Because the way we would work, say, a safer grant for the Florida property, if you would pay all of it in year one, you'd pay two-thirds of it in year two, one-third in year three, and then by year four, it's all of the budget. That way, you don't get surprised come year four. I'm kind of worried about putting, you know, zero cost for three years and surprise, here's $100,000 in year four.
Comments? I mean, yeah, I think that's certainly, you know, something we should discuss and certainly a reasonable concern. And it's come up in the past, which is, you know, we are always very careful about using one-time funding for, you know, funding new positions. Tom?
Yeah, so I definitely respect Scott's concern and agree that that's a concern. I guess what, I think we talked in a previous meeting, was to make sort of a first-year commitment. And I think, you know, immediately after that or concurrently with that, we should discuss what the strategy would be to think about how we want to move forward with it and avoid the surprise you're talking about. So I guess with an eye towards that concern, maybe a good, a good approach could be to make a request for one year at this point, and then continue the discussion about how to avoid the cliff.
You know, my only concern with that, Tom, is what kind of candidate pool do we get when you're really only promising, you know, it's basically, at least for now, you know, a temporary one-year position that may fold over into a more permanent position? I'm not saying that's the reason not to do that, do it this way, but it is a concern of mine as to what kind of candidate pool we get. Jody?
So I definitely understand, you know, Scott's concern and Tom's agreement, but I want to remind you, we are in the middle of fiscal year '22, and so there's no funding for the next six months if you want to hire this physician. And there's no funding in my current budget for fiscal year '23. So if you are thinking of easing this in, unless I'm going to cut something else from '23, you would need to fund it fully for a year and a half, just to be able to do it.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I think, well, go ahead, Tom, and then I'll see.
So I would, I would change my proposal to reflect through the end of the fiscal year that we're, you know, doing planning for now. I guess the only thing I'll mention is that most of the towns that created this position did start with one and a half year or two-year commitments to it.
Okay.
And then, and were successfully able to recruit a candidate on that basis. And then that built a lot of support in the community, demonstrated a lot of value, and then they chose to continue to fund it. I think in at least one case that we spoke to, they'd fund it in the first year with a grant, and then through the course of the year, you know, found that to be valuable enough that in the next planning cycle, they built that into their budget. So I'm agreeing both with the year and a half idea and mentioning that, to your concern, Andrea, that at least some of the towns we surveyed did start this way and were able to find good candidates.
Okay. Scott?
Nothing, nothing magical about my one year, it could be a year and a half. It was only, the point was that I don't want, I mean, I.
You don't want to fall off the cliff in year four.
Well, I think this is, I think this is a great idea. I, I, I'm part of the task force that recommends this. I absolutely think it's a great idea. I just, yeah, we also have to be prudent with our budget and not create a problem for, you know, some future, you know, board and budget. But that's, so yeah, if it's, if it's a year and a half and then we phase it, I don't know how it works, but just want to throw it out there.
Anita, and then John.
You know, I think, I think Scott brings up a good point, Ray, because obviously, this is a position that I support as well, and all of these positions. And I know this is really important, especially in COVID, everything's exacerbated. But in the same way that we're kind of looking at other boards across town as they're starting their budget process and thinking about how are they folding in additional costs into their future budget years, I feel like that's something we should practice as well, right? So if we want this coordinator position added on, if it's $100,000, what are we potentially cutting in the future years, or how is this going to be absorbed into the budget? I would like to understand that a little bit more.
And John?
Yeah, I've had some concerns about just looking at the job description, trying to visualize what the individual will be doing. Is this money going to come out of ARPA funds? Could it come out of ARPA funds? And then we get a good idea of just exactly how this fits, where some changes have to be made, and then make adjustments either a year or two years into the program.
I think that's exactly what we're, what Jody and what we're proposing is that at least for the first year or year and a half, it'd be funded by ARPA funds, but acknowledging that, as I think we all agree, and I certainly agree with Scott and Tom, is that we need, and Anita, we need to plan how this is going to be phased in, you know, after, you know, after the, whatever, the year, the year and a half of ARPA funds, so that as, you know, come year four, we, you know, basically haven't fallen. as, you know, come year four, we, you know, basically haven't fallen off the cliff and said, oh, my goodness, how are we going to fund this $100,000? And what are we going, you know, one, A, can we afford it? And two, if we love it and we want it, what are we going to cut instead to, to afford it? So I think good budget planning starts now with an eye towards how this is going to look in the future, you know, year, year, year two, year three, year four. So.
Okay.
I think what I'm hearing from the board is that there's certainly support for this position and support for the position for, at least to start with, let's just say, 18 months, if we take into consideration the rest of fiscal year '22 and FY '23. But at the same time, we have to start planning for how we're going to, how we're going to fit this in or phase this in. And again, John, as you said, you know, if it turns out, which I highly doubt, that for some reason, you know, it wasn't working, we can make those adjustments. Or if we see during this time period, hey, let's, we can, we should be doing this, we can rearrange this, then we'll be talking about that as well. So.
Yeah, I just think that there are a lot of unknowns coming up, and just how, what the impact's going to be, and what the needs are going to be. So I think, and with this job description, that may fit us right now, but it may be something, we may need to change it, bring in some other position or something like that. But I'd just be, I think we could go ahead if we use ARPA funds, and then look at adjustments in 18 months or so.
Scott?
Here's the reason why I mentioned phasing it was, okay, we've got, we've got more needs than we do dollars in that spreadsheet, right? So if we fund a year and a half of this now, and then we go through our spreadsheet, and come August, we spent it all, there's no money there for year, you know, two, three, four. So the reason why I was mentioning the tapering off is to put some kind of number in there to reserve that money in the ARPA funds, so that it doesn't get forgotten. Now, we can always just, I guess, the back of our minds, say, it's there, don't forget it. But I just want to make sure we don't burn up our, our ARPA money, and then it's not there for this, for this spot in year two or three.
Okay, so what's the pleasure? Is there a motion here? Is there a motion to support it and how to fund it? Or how would the board like to move forward? I mean, I do hear that, that people are supportive of this position. So, so Tom, go ahead.
Well, I think I'd like to make the motion that we support the creation of this position with an initial term of 18 months, with planning during that time to, to make choices around how we can make sure we've budgeted in and don't run into a cliff.
And funding the first 18 months through ARPA?
Through ARPA.
Friendly amendment. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Is there any further discussion? Let me make sure that, okay, no, we don't have anybody from the audience. Okay. Oh, Anita, go ahead.
Do we need to talk about how much the position would be?
You mean?
I mean, the salary?
The salary.
Yeah.
I thought, and maybe this was just my assumption based on what I saw in our package, is that it was a top number of $100,000, and that included both salary and benefits. Am I correct about that?
I thought it was 75. Sorry.
Jody?
So, so, yeah, it was about 75. I updated it actually today. But we don't ever know if they're going to take a family plan, you know, with the health insurance or what. So it's hard to just pinpoint an exact number. But I think roughly, we felt, and that doesn't mean we need to spend the full 100 if they don't, that could go towards the next year or further on. But, you know, it's, it's hard to hire people right now, too. So, you know, you don't want to make it too restrictive. But, so I would say 100 is a nice round number. And so if you want to do a year and a half, you know, 150, and we'll do the best we can. I just say one more thing, you know, just as you did back in 2018, you told me your priority was public safety and how you wanted, where you wanted me to go, so to speak. And so I've been getting there slowly. But I think if, if this is something that you want to continue to fund in the future, we, we do need to be thinking about that and planning for that. And it's easier to have some lead time than not. So anyway, I just, you know, I'm hearing you loud and clear, I guess I want to say.
Okay. Okay, so Scott?
I guess the only thing I would think about, so if we say it's $100,000 in year one, and we need, you know, 18 months, 150. Yeah, if we did it with a sort of, you know, 2/3 and 1/3 tapering, we'd need something like, you know, 70 in year, two and a half to three and a half, and then, you know, 30-ish in that. So we could decide it's just appropriate, you know, $250,000 from this money for a year and a half, and just make sure we have that money reserved if we wanted to do anything beyond that. And I'm still sitting here thinking we're going to run out of money. And if we reserve it upfront, and Dan's keeping track of how much we've promised to spend, if we consider three years, that's a 250. You know, okay, fund one year, I guess, tough motion, or my second, you know, fund it one year at 150, but maybe instruct, you know, Jody and Dan to have a placeholder in there for, you know, 250 total, just so we don't lose track of it. Am I making it too complicated?
I think, for me personally, yes. I think you are making it too complicated, you know. But that's me. I, you know, I don't know about what the other board members, I think. Jody? Jody, you're on mute.
You know, I think it might get a little difficult if we start kind of making different, you know, like, fully fund this, but we'll reserve this. And I would prefer you to kind of just decide definitively if possible. I'm just worried we're going to get overcomplicate this whole process, but that's my personal feeling.
Well, I think you're right.
Yeah, I mean, I think we go with the motion that, that you folks, that was made, which is that we fund it for $150,000 over the, over 18 months. I think we, given direction to Jody, that, you know, we, we need to plan for the future, that this is a priority, and how we're going to fit it into our budget after 18 months and moving forward. And we can certainly come back and look at it and say, hey, you know what, we're going to take another 100K or whatever it is from ARPA for years two and three. That is, my, that's my, that's where I'm coming from. I-
Okay.
All right, so we have a motion in a second. So, all those in favor, Tom?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Hi. All right, that is the wellness coordinator. Thank you. The other one is the mobile mental health clinician. And if I understand the request right now, it's for 10 hours a week. Is it correct, Jennifer, or Tom? Jennifer, you're muted.
Okay, yeah, so it, right now, we're looking at 10 hours every other week.
Every other week, okay.
Yes.
And can that start immediately, do you know, or?
Well, to be honest, we know, we've just been waiting on the funding before we can really, really kind of really get into the nuts and bolts with the clinician and the agency and, and the schools and with the school and safety task force. We're just kind of waiting to see what funds would be available. And then, you know, I would love to see it be put in place probably by March.
Okay, great. Okay, so is there a motion to fund the mobile mental health clinician at 10 hours every other week?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor, Tom?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Hi. Jody?
Just to clarify, you're allocating $45,000 towards this?
Yes, I'm sorry, I should have said that. $45,000 from ARPA funds.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to be crystal clear.
Thank you for clarifying that. We should have made that clear. Okay. And we're holding on the, the substance abuse tobacco control compliance agent until we hear back from Ray and the Board of Health. So, thank you all very much, very much appreciated. Thanks for all your hard work. And then lastly, Jody, any, I don't know if it's you or Dan, but any updates or new requests for our ARPA funds?
Yes.
Okay.
And so I think Eric's going to pull it up. It is in your packets. But so, we did color code this. I don't know if it can all show up here. But the first, so I'm only sharing with you changes or new requests, all right? So the first change would be project number 10, which is the fire department, their request for funding to offset the overtime. And so they reduced that request from the last one. Maybe Eric, you could make it a little, there you go, a little bigger. I don't think we're on the right column.
Yeah, Eric, you need to move it over to the right.
To the right. See the amount.
There you go.
Okay, so that was reduced to 554, 643. And the reason being that I have added a firefighter to the 23 budget. So they reduced their request, hoping that that firefighter gets funded. So that's why. Okay, and then as we move along, if we go to project number 18, this is, Ray Dick is asking for this, this is $75,000 to buy tests for the general public. So the FEMA is not reimbursing for the general public, they're only reimbursing for the employees. So if you favor her trying to buy test kits now for the public, this is what she's looking for.
Okay.
All right, so keep moving. The next one is 21. And that is Ray, well, that's the tobacco, so we're going to skip that one. But she did kind of clarify that one. And so then we'll skip down to 22. That is the social media manager that she had requested. She broke it out in this sheet by year, because that was consistent with other requests. So it's $31,000 a year for that request. And then if you skip, well, then you skip down to 29, and you just voted to approve that. But Jennifer did add more information on to the cost of that one. So that's there. And then if you skip down to 33, there's now, I believe, five requests that is WCAT. And they put in several requests, and most of it is for equipment that they think would help them in broadcasting different things. Some of it, they do feel is COVID-related because of more remote broadcasts and so on. So they put in separate requests. I don't know that Sarah's here, but you can see all those different requests. And let's see. Somebody said something. Okay, so then if you skip down to 51 to 53, that's just the tobacco control again, and that is broken down by year, where it was lumped together in the prior sheet. And then number 56 is the last one, and that is a sustainability director, which we got a request for from the Clean Energy and Sustainability Committee. So that is the new and changed requests from before.
Anita?
I have a question about one of the, the WCAT requests.
Sure.
There are two that look exactly the same. Do you think that's a typo, or like the first two?
Yeah, the first two are, yeah.
Or do they need two?
I feel like, Madam Chair, I feel like I should be able to answer that, but can't. So we may have to ask Sarah to clarify. Sarah Fletcher.
Yep, that's fine. I don't know if she's on tonight.
Dan, are you out there, too? Do you know if that was, that's a duplicate?
I'm trying to check my emails right now. Let me get right back. Yeah, I'll do a quick search.
It does look like they are identical. So, and while we're waiting, we did check, and these are all, you may fund nonprofits, so.
Okay.
I did not tell people to come that, beyond what you talked about, because I wasn't sure, you know, who you wanted to speak to, so.
Okay, so are there any of the, of the additions that Jody just read off? Are there any that we want to talk about tonight? Are there any that we want to put on our, for our next meeting and have folks come in? Scott?
It's just a question, I guess, maybe to, maybe it's for Tom and, and maybe Sarah eventually, but how long does it take to get this equipment installed? So if we made a decision to purchase it, is it six months? Is it one month? That might be helpful in terms of how we prioritize, you know, the future meeting.
Somehow I have a feeling Tom can't answer that question.
Andrea?
I don't know.
You're 100% right. If we, I think your approach is great, Andrea. If we, if we identify some things for next time, I think Sarah would be very happy to come prepared to explain any of that.
Okay. Jody?
Yeah, can I go back? Eric, can you flip back to 21? I think we have a little error in this one, too, that I'm just... So I, 21 in the, in the request, in the comments, it says something about tobacco vape compliance. And I, I said that we were holding, but actually, when I look at this, I think those comments are incorrect. And what she did is she broke down one-time costs to run clinics in town. And she broke it down very specifically. However, we do believe that this is FEMA-eligible, so I do want to mention that. But I believe we have the wrong comments in that column, so we can correct that, too.
Okay.
You finding anything, Dan?
Not yet, still looking.
Well, we can get back to you on that, too. We don't want to hold you up.
Yeah, we don't want to hold you up, Dan. Tom?
Just a thought on the agenda items for next time. And I don't know if Ray can answer this or not, but certainly as soon as the Health Department has a chance to think through their needs, you know, we'd love to invite them to come back. And I'd love to invite them to come back and make sure that we understand those needs and can discuss them.
I would agree. I mean, I think the, the, those needs, as well as Westford CAT, you know, really, you know, tie into, you know, dealing with COVID directly. And since that remains our priority, let's have those folks back in at our next meeting on the 25th. So Jody, if you can invite them, that would be great.
Yeah, I will. And so the, I think, and Dan, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the highest priority for tonight, at least in terms of people's requests, are Ray- are Ray Dick for the $75,000 for resident tests. If that's something you support, she does not have any funding to purchase those. So that is, I know, I don't know if she's still out, oh yeah, she is out there. She's got her hand up, she's got her hand up, so she can speak to that, okay.
Yep, go ahead, yeah, if you would promote Ray again.
Hello?
Hi, yep, we hear you, Ray.
I'm here, thank you so much. Yes, our immediate request would certainly be, we've had numerous requests through the Senior Center, through the Town Manager's Office, and the Health Department regarding residents asking for kits. As of this afternoon, we've heard from the Department of Public Health that, as you know, that Governor Baker is receiving 26 million COVID kits for schools and daycare settings only. They do not have logistics available at this time, and who or how those kits will go out. So, our understanding is only employee kits at this time are FEMA-reimbursed. With the constant change of vendors and pricing, we're asking for a flat fee of $75,000. As of today, the four vendors that are approved through the procurement process for the Department of Public Health, those kit prices range from $5 a kit to $26 a kit. I don't know if you have specific questions.
Yeah, I mean, the other thing, Ray, and I know you can follow up on this, is tomorrow, what I did hear tonight, that Governor Baker was also making available to municipalities through various vendors, kits for municipalities, on top of what he's making available for schools and daycare centers. So, you know, I'm sure, you know, you're on top of this, and you can follow up with that.
Sure. Yeah, we did order today, actually, for employees through high, high health rapid antigen kits. We ordered today for our employees through FEMA reimbursement.
Anyway, I don't know how other people feel, but quite frankly, you know, getting, getting test kits is impossible right now. And so, you know, I'm sure that we have many folks who are looking for them, many probably vulnerable folks who are looking for them. And again, this seems to be directly related to COVID, so certainly something I think that we should consider. Tom?
Excuse me, I just had a question about, and maybe this is a question for Ray, whether there's, we should go ahead and execute tonight on $30,000 or $35,000, and then see how the dust settles with how, other ways these kits will arrive? Or if the supply chain is just, it's such a messed up thing that you feel like we should go ahead and do the whole amount now? Because it's just gonna, there's not a lot of clarity out there, and I don't, do you have a read about whether?
Yes. Yes, actually, most, most vendors want to see a minimum of a certain amount of kits. For instance, right now for the $5 per kit, it's a minimum of one pallet, which is 15,000 kits. We have storage for one pallet, no more than one at this time. So yes, you are correct, with the vendor prices keep changing, availability, shipping costs, and there are minimums that we have to order, and we'll receive those kits.
Anita?
Yeah, I would support releasing funds to get test kits in people's hands. And, but I have a question, Ray, if the Board of Health would be able to, or the Health Department has talked about offering like a testing site? Is that something that's possible? Because I feel like people are so desperate for these tests. I know we're gonna get inundated with tests eventually. But, I mean, just since like, you know, people want like PCRs and stuff like that, is that something that we could do or explore?
We are, we're actually exploring right now mobile booster clinics, and we're exploring booster sites and COVID testing sites through third parties. It's not something we have the capacity with our Health Department, we're providing to the community. But we are looking at third parties right now.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
John?
Yeah, have you thought, Ray, have you thought about how you're gonna allocate these kits? Because I understand that they were earmarking these kits for people that were going into crowded situations, going to, well, going to school for one thing, but. And just how would you allocate these? What would be the requirement to get a test if they're so rare?
Sure, absolutely. So, I have talked with Jennifer Claro at the Senior Center about what the needs are for not only our seniors, our food pantry, Meals on Wheels recipients, our housing authorities. They have spoken with their department, they're willing to take names, check IDs. We would reserve a specific amount. We were talking about 25,000 to 3,000 kits to reserve for those folks that are in need. The rest of the portion, we would provide a drive-through clinic option, even when the cold, to the residents, checking IDs, giving one test kit, which has two tests in a kit, to each person that's in the vehicle. So it would be a one-time, two-to-three-hour drive-through scenario, and several communities across the Commonwealth have given those kits out that way.
Yeah, I think the point they were trying to make was that not everybody needs to go out and get a test. You've already been vaccinated, you're not planning on going any kind of a big event or anything, or going in an environment like schools or something like that. You don't really need to do that. I'm just concerned about the run that's gonna be on, if we only have 15,000 kits. It's gonna be interesting.
Yes, I mean, our goal would be certainly to prioritize the populations of the community that are not able to get these kits, whether they're in mobile, handicapped. Like I said, we already have a list growing at the Health Department of folks that are currently looking for kits, that are unable to get them, but I certainly understand where you're coming from.
Well, I think it's an appropriate expenditure for that, so.
So, is there a motion to expend $75,000 from ARPA funds in order to order, I guess, one pallet of test kits?
Moved. Second.
All those in favor, Scott?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Aye. Jody? I know you're not voting, but you have your hand up.
Well, I've moved on to the next topic, so I just wanted to let you know that I heard from Steve Edwards, and those are two separate requests, one's for Millennium and one's for Town Hall, so.
Okay, great, thank you. All right. Okay, I think that concludes our discussion about ARPA funds tonight. As I've said, it'll be a continuing discussion, and we'll be back on our agenda at our next meeting to discuss some of the other requests that we got tonight. All right, we're at our 8:55 PM item, which is Old and New Business. The first, consider approval of the Local Initiative Program Compliance Certificate for the Stoneview Development Corp. property located at One Morris Circle. Somebody is, Jody, go ahead. Oh, you're muted again, Jody.
Sorry, guess I'm getting tired. But you have done this before, all this does is make sure that the affordable housing requirements go with the property when this is sold. And so it's a requirement to keep it in place, it has been approved by the DHCD, so.
Is there a motion to approve?
There's no one here to speak to it.
That's okay. Is there a second? Favor, Tom?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we have a request to approve Alcohol Beverages Control Commission Retail Liquor License Renewal Application. Jody?
Yeah, all this is, it's a form that unfortunately we got late, but you're just attesting to who did not renew, and you do this every year too. So, the form is in your packets.
Is there a motion to approve?
Moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, John?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Aye.
Who has to sign that? And all of us, or one of us, or none of us?
Well, you all, but you've given me permission, so when you take a vote, then we put in your signature. If you'd rather stop by, we'll.
No, 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 I just wanted to make sure it wasn't one of those in-person kind of thing, okay, great, thanks.
Yep. Okay, we have a request from the Cultural Council to decrease their membership from 10 seats to eight seats. This will help them with quorum, so is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, Anita?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Aye. We have a request from the Healthy Westford Committee to appoint Nadia Monsif as a full member for a term to expire on June 30th, 2022. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, Scott?
Aye.
Tom? John?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
Aye. And we have a request from the Affordable Housing Trust to appoint Nadia Monsif as a full member for a term to expire on June 30th, 2023. Is there a motion to approve? Second?
Second.
Here, somebody. All those in favor, Tom?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, any board reports or updates? Okay, I don't see any. Minutes, we have minutes for release, for approval and release of our regular session of November 23rd, 2021. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All those in favor, John?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
And I abstain because I wasn't there. And then we have minutes, executive session minutes of November 9th, 2021, and November 23rd, 2021, but not for release, and is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All those in favor, Anita?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And I approve November 9th and abstain on November 23rd. All right, Town Managers Report, you're up, Jody.
Okay, so the first item is I'm requesting the Select Board ratify the Settlement Participation Form for the J&amp;J Settlement and the Subdivision Settlement Participation Form Distributor Settlement Relative to the Massachusetts Attorney General's Opioid Settlement Process.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, John?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, and then we are asking you to consider adopting minimum wage increases for municipal employees from $1,350 to $1,425 effective January 1st, 2022.
And just so folks know, this is in keeping with the state increasing minimal wage as of January 1st, based on legislation, I think they passed now three years ago, so.
So moved.
Second? All those in favor? Where, Anita?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Aye.
And then, request to accept a gift in the amount of $3,000 for first responders donated from the Lowell Five Cent Savings Bank.
Motion to accept with gratitude?
Second?
Second.
And all those in favor, oh, Anita, you have your hand up.
I do, I was just curious to know how that's gonna get split up, since it was like for several groups or departments?
I believe that the police took $1,500 and the fire took $1,500.
Very equitable.
They use it for equipment, you know, that, that they need, so. And we, I already sent a thank you letter to Lowell Five, so I think it's in, I think it's in your packet.
It's in our packets, yes.
Yeah.
All right. All those in favor, Tom?
Aye.
Scott? John?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
Aye.
Actually, Dan is correcting me, dispatch got $1,000.
Okay.
Fire $1,000, police $1,000, so, Dan, they split it three ways. Lucky dispatch. Okay, so then I have a request for contracts, Ameris, Tom, you could help me with this, Ameresco, Ameresco?
Ameresco.
Ameresco.
The Ameresco, thank you, for the completion of the investment grade audit at town school buildings as part of the Potential Energy Savings Performance Contract, and thank you, Tom, for helping with that for $58,447. G&amp;P Services Contractors for a heat pump replacement at the JV Fletcher Library in the amount of $11,870. Brookview Irrigation and Scott's Tree and Landscape for snow plowing for the 2021 to 2022 winter season. Rates in the packet, and Purchase Order is Unicon for an incline platform lift at the Abbott Elementary School in the amount of $49,500. You gave ARPA funds for that. And George Wilkinson Inc. for glycol replacement at the police station in the amount of $27,313.
Okay, Anita, you have your hand up?
Yeah, I have a question about the, the energy contract, and just the timeline of that. I don't remember if we already talked about this, but when is that? When would this be, or start, like rollout?
Oh, Eric disappeared, there he is.
Hi. So, the idea is that, once the Select Board approves this, we would get the investment grade audit going as quickly as possible, because during the winter months is the best time to do it, and to put together a list of potential projects that we could bring to the town meeting in June.
Okay.
And Tom?
Two things, one, I just want to compliment Eric on the outstanding process that went through. We looked at a lot of different providers, a lot of details, really detailed interviews. And I thought the consultant that we had on the project, and Eric can remind me of her name, was also outstanding.
Beth Greenblatt.
Beth Greenblatt. And then the other point is just how exciting this is, just being able to see it up close. This is, you know, a systemic, whole-town review of all kinds of options. We're gonna have a huge number of opportunities come to us to consider, you know, green energy, renewables, and all kinds of things. It's a, it's a transformational project, so I just didn't want it to go by without saying what a big deal it is, and just how exciting it was to see the part I got to see.
That's great, thank you. Anita?
Yeah, you know, I heard about how intense the project was, so thank you, Tom, for being part of that. I have a question also, I guess, you know, so we'll have the list of projects for town meeting, but when and how will this be integrated into capital, right? Because I felt like this was gonna be almost like a work plan for us, or a roadmap for capital projects. And I just, we don't need the answer tonight, but I just want to make sure that that's on your list of integration stuff.
Okay. All right. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I'm sorry, did we have a motion? I forget, did we have a motion in a second to approve these? I don't think we.
Not yet, I don't think, no.
I don't think we did, so is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
In a second? Okay, all those in favor, Tom?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, is there a motion to waive reading of correspondence?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, everybody raise their hands, all in favor? Okay. And is there a motion to adjourn? Second, great, all those in favor? Great, thank you all very much. It was, you know, we did, we did a lot of work tonight, we went through a lot of things, so thank you very much. Good night, Westford, everybody stay safe, stay, stay healthy, and take good care. Good night.
You too.
Night, everybody, thank you.